All right, it's 5:30. I'll call this caucus to this meeting reporter. Everybody has an agenda. And I'll ask if there's any changes, corrections to that agenda. I know our council wants an executive session this evening.
Correct.
And so we'll add that at the end of the meeting. Is that okay? We'll do first or title only on the ordinances. And is there any other questions or concerns about the agenda? If not, let's stand for the closing, please.
................................................................................................ Mayor, do you have any presentations or...
I do not.
Okay. Everybody has a copy of the minutes. Was there any corrections, concerns with the minutes? If not, the stand is written. Reading of communications. I'll start with Mr. Tisch.
I have none.
Mr. Neff. I had a call from... Is this the appropriate time I apologize to bring up a call from a constituent?
Yeah, yes.
About parking trucks in residential areas. Mike, did you have time to research that?
Yes, I do. That's a police ordinance. I talked to Chuck on that. I can send him a letter. How to park a 20-foot vehicle or an eight-foot-high trucker.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mayor?
I have none.
And Mrs. Oliver.
The only thing I have to share is that everyone was really pleased with our annual lighting of the green on Friday. It was very nice. We had decent weather and it was well-attended.
I have no communications this evening. Just like to thank Mrs. Oliver for conducting the meeting. The last time I was not able to be here, and so I appreciate that. Thank you. Wade?
So the only thing I have is just a reminder that I told you for the City Hall closures coming up during the Christmas, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day holiday, Monday 12/24 and Tuesday 12/25. And then the following Tuesday on January 1st, all city offices will be closed exclusive of critical personnel, obviously the police department. And any emergency situation that public works is required will be on call.
Okay, great. Reports of committees, board, city manager, finance director, chief of police, zoning inspector, and public works foreman. And I'll start with Mr. Tisch.
I have no report to do.
Thank you. Mr. Neff. Our committee has not met this month yet, so I have no report. Okay. Mayor Duffett?
Yes, I have a mayor's monthly report to council on mayor's court for the month of November. Gross collections $6,706.09. Total to the state treasurer $1,269.50 on mandatory payments. Total payouts to the treasurer of Mahoney County $1,308. So the net collections to the city for the month of November was $5,398.09.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Oliver.
Our board meets on Monday, next Monday.
The fire district really don't have anything to report. It's just that it's a busy time of the year for collecting data for our upcoming budget. We're starting, we'll start working on that shortly here. Of course, in January, we elect the board every year. And that board, because it's a joint fire district, consists of one member of the city council, which happens to be me right now, one member of the trustees, which is Marie Cartwright. We have a citizen from the city of Campfield. We have a citizen from the township, and then we have an at-large. And we have one city member going off this year. So if anybody would be interested in sitting on the fire board, you're welcome to see me and I'll submit your name and we'll be going through that process here shortly. Other than that, we're working on the budget. We have some decisions to make next year as far as the equipment goes. We are on a schedule to replace and update equipment as we go. And one of the things that you realize now that we have a full ambulance service that we provide, and so we have two new ambulances. We have one that's rather used. We bought that one used to begin with. And so maybe we will be looking to replace that as well as a ladder truck this year. But all is in the budget and we'll be working on that for 2019. Yes, sir.
Well, I have had a resident of the city that has shown or indicated some interest in serving on the fire board. He's a retired firefighter in the city of Youngstown and is a resident here. So I will make contact with him, make sure that he's still interested.
Okay. Inform that information to me.
And council president, Morvay. We also, a couple weeks back, put out the applications for interest to the community. I think we got six applications back for various boards and commissions. Only one of those individuals checked the fire board as an interest, so we'll forward that name as well.
Oh, great. Thank you. Mrs. Clayton.
I posted the November check register and the year-to-date cash basis fund summary yesterday to the city's website. And next meeting that there'll be legislation for the 2019 temporary budget and a final budget adjustment for 2018. And I'm also going to be doing legislation for unclaimed funds, which are any uncashed checks from this year that will be moving into our unclaimed funds account.
Great. Mike?
There were no permits issues since last meeting. I'm working with McDonald's still on their rebuild. I issued them a zoning permit number so they can go to the county and get their process started there because that takes quite a while. Working on water meters and water cap prices right now. And after that, we'll probably have a permit totally this month, ready to go.
Wade?
So from the public works front, a few water breaks that were worked. One on Cedar Trail, one on Brook Park, which was Monday morning. There was one on the corner of Montrose, Montridge, and Neft Road yesterday afternoon. So the guys have been busy this week, last week, and the previous week. As I mentioned, we were finishing up leaf pickup, and then we also had the storm debris cleanup that we were going through the city and sweeping for all the storm damage that was done from the ice storm. That was originally scheduled to take place over three days, Monday through Wednesday of the week after Thanksgiving. That actually extended, we finished this past Monday. So there was substantial damage throughout the city from the residential side, but we were able to get through the entire city and pick up all brush that was put out by the crew at the enforcement. So now we're kind of moving into getting ready for winter weather, converting over the plow trucks to prep them and have them ready for plowing, salting. Obviously prep the Seattle Village Green amongst all the other things going on for the lighting. And so now we're in kind of maintenance mode on our storm catch basins after leaf season, ember leaves, and updating our catch basins. So now city crews will go through and kind of suck out all, anything that's built up in there to keep those clear as we start getting the snow melting and ice and various rain events. From the city manager's standpoint, our comprehensive plan RFQ committee met last night to do a suggestions to our RFQ draft. It was a very productive meeting, very good suggestions that came from the committee. We will post that RFQ on Friday, December 7th. It will be open until January the 11th. Once those proposals are closed, the committee will then probably reconvene and start evaluating those. We're hopeful that we can shortlist it to about five firms to then kind of sit down and interview and propose three of those firms for a city council's consideration. We also had last night our Town Center Associates workshop on their final report and recommendations. You should have all received the final report. We've got a couple hard copies that we have here if the city of citizens want them. I requested an electronic copy from Town Center so that way we can post it on our website and make it readily available to anybody that wants to look at that report. They also proposed kind of phase two, which is that three-year contract agreement, which I have. City council will see that as per legislation on a later council meeting. As I mentioned, the interest in the boards and commissions. We have the fire board vacancy, and we found out at the Parks Board meeting on Tuesday that one of the Parks Board members will actually resign prematurely. His term does not end until next year. So we'll actually have a Parks Board vacancy to fill as well. Luckily, we have about six people who show interest, so we'll just kind of start putting the names out there and see if they're, one, can they meet at the time the Parks Board meets? And kind of make sure that they're on board with serving on the Parks Board. So hopefully the Parks Board will also be appointing their member towards the beginning of the year. As Mike mentioned with the McDonald's update, they've got all their appropriate permits for the new build in communication with the contractor today, I'm sorry, the architect today. There's been a lot of inquiries and citizens throughout the city wondering what's going to happen with the McDonald's. When are they going to start doing something? Their plan is to demo starting at the beginning of the year. All of it is weather permitting. So because the new McDonald's does not have a basement, they have to engineer backfill where the basement currently exists due to weather conditions that can only be done under certain parameters. So they're hopeful, weather permitting, they can start that at the beginning of the year. From start to finish on the project, we're looking at about 10 to 12 weeks. So once they start demo and then full rebuild is about 10 to 12 weeks from whenever they actually start. So it's kind of in limbo because it's weather permitting. But they are looking at potentially, you know, the build may not start until March 8th or a potential May opening, early spring. So as Mike mentioned, we're in a lot of constant communications with the appropriate individuals within their organization to kind of stay updated on what's going on with the McDonald's. Finally, the website project, on track for that, January 1st launch. Both Chief Calucci and I have meetings set up with the developer. Chief's piece is kind of more that feel and design of the police department portion of that website. The website is pretty much past the design phase at this point. They're implementing all of the, what takes the longest, which I guess they pieced everything apart and then slowly started adding content and different things. So we're excited. I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to look at that design prior to the last council meeting, but I'm really excited tomorrow to see that functionality that we should be able to implement into the new website. And that's all I have, other than the items that are on the agenda for legislation, which we can talk about as we get this together.
Very unfortunate.
A few things. We had submitted a bunch of information relative to the community, proven corporation, all of you. I received a couple, we received comments back from Chuck, but I haven't received comments back from anybody else. If you have any comments, please get those to Wade, maybe early next week, so we can get that on the agenda for the next council meeting. The judgment entry was filed today in the Igrahola case. So we'll see. Hopefully the judge will sign that, and there'll be an obvious right of appeal. Whether that happens or not, we won't know, but that judgment entry was filed.
Great.
We're going to, we've started working pretty hard on some tax payment research for new businesses and new construction, new commercial construction in town. I know there hasn't been any decisions made on anything, just a lot of research on our end, and we're probably putting together some information for you to consider. You know, if you're going to grant tax payments in the state of Ohio, you have to create a CRA. So we're looking at that. We've had some conversations with MS and their economic development experts about that. There's some great models for other communities that we've looked at. So you'll see that coming over the next couple of months to the creation of that community reinvestment area that allows us to then grant and consider at least tax payments. Just a couple other quick things. We're going to be providing some information relative, or some legislation to amend the water rules primarily in regards to the backflow preventers. County has made some recommendations, clarified some issues for me yesterday, so you'll probably see that at a next meeting or two. And that's about it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief Calucci, I'm sorry.
Before we see those, or, that's not fair. I'd like to see them before they appear on council.
When is that?
The backflow prevention rules.
Oh, okay, sure. I'll make sure you get it out.
Thank you.
Chief Calucci?
In regards to the three items of legislation that you have in front of you, I just wanted to kind of go over what's been happening from a county perspective and what we're going to be signing into. We're probably the last agency that needs to sign, which just happened to be the way the dates felt. Commissioners look to execute the agreements tomorrow. So they're due tomorrow. So if there's any questions I could tell, if there's any questions, or do you want me to review it, or do you just want to wait for questions?
We can probably go over it once we get to that.
Yeah. Other than the original.
Okay, great. Questions, concerns, guys? Could I ask? Yeah, go ahead. Chief Calucci, there was a thing in the paper about an arrest of an individual with an automatic weapon. Was that two weeks ago, or?
Yes.
Is that by R? I didn't recognize that the address, it didn't seem like it was a Campfield address.
I will, I will look and give back if you want me to. I want to make sure I give you accurate information, and I want to make sure the case is closed before I talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Wade, I just, I had a question for you. This, you know, in light of this General Motors plant possibly closing and, you know, losing those people's jobs and therefore income, is there anything we can do to get ahead of the game to kind of see what kind of an impact that's going to make on the city of Campfield and our revenue?
Other for the Christina, it's hard. I mean, it would be speculation at best, but unfortunately, we're going to have to be reactive in the sense that when we feel the impact should be potentially the March, April times rain of 2019. But we can definitely try to dive into some of the data and get a general estimate, but again, a lot of it is speculation at best. Because that's assuming everybody's not getting other jobs, not, you know, transferring to other, so there's a lot of unknowns within that that we're just not able to get into.
And I, you know, I know, I understand it won't be impactful like right away because you have unemployment and severance and all those other things. But we should be cognizant of it going forward and really be aware of maybe 2020, 2021, really. Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. There's been several posts. I don't follow the Campfield neighbor website. I think I'm looking forward to our website maybe being even a better way to communicate. But I think there's been several posts on citizens asking about exorbitant water bills that they, as people...
Yeah, I did see that post. None of the four individuals that have posted have communicated with our water department to really understand and, I guess, talk through what the charges are. So again, social media is a beautiful thing when it's utilized correctly. Unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation that gets put out on social media. So we monitor and we're aware of conversations, but the best way to solve issues with the city is to try to obviously with the city council or directly with the city from an operational level, whether it's myself, Chief Calucci, or our department.
Great. At this time, I'd ask any citizen or resident that has a question about these particular reports that you just heard, if you'd come up and state your name and address at the podium and ask your question, please. Okay, hearing none. At this time, I recognize persons desiring to appear before council, and I have Mayor McKeon.
Good evening, Frank McKeon, 220 Glenview. A couple of items. The first one I have, might have been under the previous opportunity to talk, but refer you to section 3.09 of the charter. That says that the people who should be attending are reporting on the finance director, chief of police, zoning inspector, and public works foreman. I have not seen a public works foreman here for a long time. I know the city manager tries to fill in, but the charter says that person should be here and make their own report. And I think in doing so, he or she can enlighten us if we go into some of the details that are going on within the public works arena. So I would, so we'd like to see us have that person here. Number two. Since we've just recently passed amendments in regard to section 3.01, I would like to make formal request to see a complete write-up of what the new 3.01 section looks like in detail, word for word, what it's going to look like on a timely basis.
I believe that was in the ordinance, right in the ordinance.
The order, just, just a snippet.
No, to continue down in that ordinance, it's in there, what it will look like.
I sure didn't see it.
Take a look at that and if that's...
What was on the ballot?
No, no, not on the ballot. In the ordinance we passed, it's been restated that section subsequent to passage of passage.
Should that be in the minutes?
It would be in the ordinance, so it was in the ordinance, which certainly is part of the record.
Should I get a copy?
Yeah. And I'll tell you what, if you get a copy of it and that doesn't satisfy what you need, then give me a call.
I just want to see the complete word for word.
Yep. It's right in there. But if that's not good enough, just give me a shout. You have my contact, you know, to get a hold of it.
Yeah, but if you don't, I wrote what I thought I wrote anyway. It probably don't beep on. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Coons?
My name's Alan Coons, 554th Street. After snow and ice, I had looms from the front pine tree, scattered 15 to 20 of them, and about the same amount from an oak tree. Being sick, I couldn't do anything with it. Somebody paid somebody to come over, cut it up, haul everything out between the sidewalk and the street, which the city come by and cleaned out all. So I just want to say thanks.
Thank you, thank you. It's always comforting to hear people instead of complaining, "Thank you." So that's really well received.
Can you call every week?
Thank you.
Behind my back?
I'm watching you.
Okay. Is there anybody else wishing to appear before council? Okay, hearing none. Any old business that we need to attend to this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to new business, and we're talking about ordinances here. As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading, and he is second.
Second.
Mrs. Oliver.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver? Yes. Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch, could you do ordinance eight?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for general engineering services with MS Consultants Incorporated for the year 2019. I move for passage.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Oliver, in discussion. Wade, our chief, could you enlighten us on this ordinance?
Sure. So the current MS consultants in engineering, for basic engineering services agreement has been on a cycle of basically, it starts March 1st and it ends February 28th of the following year. What we're doing is we proposed canceling that current contract, which it would cancel at December 31st, implement the new contract effective January 1st, so that it better aligns with our fiscal year. So currently, we kind of take a portion of that contract that gets funneled over to the following fiscal year. Now, there's two reasons we're doing that. One is that clean up, so it aligns better with the fiscal year. Secondly, next year, around probably October, November, if not earlier, we plan on doing an RFQ for engineering services for a three-year term beginning in January 1st of 2020, so that that way that three-year contract better aligns in the future with our fiscal year. Basically, we need to start kind of that prep at this fiscal year. So that's basically what it does. It cancels the current agreement from essentially January 1st through February 28th, starts a new agreement January 1st through December 31st of 2019. We've talked to MS about this. They kind of feel the same way. From an accounting standpoint, it's always, it causes not a whole lot of issues, but it's just something that they're cognizant of, we're cognizant of, where this will better align with both fiscal years and kind of clean it up from a standpoint of we're not crossing fiscal years.
Okay. Councilman, do anybody have any questions, concerns?
Does the, does the rate included in the contract reflect the adjustment of the early cancellation and the new rates for next year?
Yes, so the new contract in the exhibit, I believe there's an attachment with those new rates. There is a slight increase in the contract that includes some additional planning and economic development consultant dollars that are currently not in our current contract. We've been kind of allocating other staff meeting time, council meeting time dollars for those economic development conversations we've had.
Okay, but the not to exceed number that you got in there for sort of general services, has that number been blended with those, the new rates?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'd ask any citizen or resident, come up and state your name and address and your question, please.
Frank McKeon, 220 Glenview. A question in regard to the contract. What was the cost of this contract last year?
Just over $40,000, over $40,898.
So it was about eight or nine thousand dollars each?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Is there anybody else that would have a question or concern? Patty, please.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver? Yes. Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch, could you do ordinance eight?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for general engineering services with MS Consultants Incorporated for the year 2019. I move for passage.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Oliver, in discussion. Wade, our chief, could you enlighten us on this ordinance?
Sure. So the current MS consultants in engineering, for basic engineering services agreement has been on a cycle of basically, it starts March 1st and it ends February 28th of the following year. What we're doing is we proposed canceling that current contract, which it would cancel at December 31st, implement the new contract effective January 1st, so that it better aligns with our fiscal year. So currently, we kind of take a portion of that contract that gets funneled over to the following fiscal year. Now, there's two reasons we're doing that. One is that clean up, so it aligns better with the fiscal year. Secondly, next year, around probably October, November, if not earlier, we plan on doing an RFQ for engineering services for a three-year term beginning in January 1st of 2020, so that that way that three-year contract better aligns in the future with our fiscal year. Basically, we need to start kind of that prep at this fiscal year. So that's basically what it does. It cancels the current agreement from essentially January 1st through February 28th, starts a new agreement January 1st through December 31st of 2019. We've talked to MS about this. They kind of feel the same way. From an accounting standpoint, it's always, it causes not a whole lot of issues, but it's just something that they're cognizant of, we're cognizant of, where this will better align with both fiscal years and kind of clean it up from a standpoint of we're not crossing fiscal years.
Okay. Councilman, do anybody have any questions, concerns?
Does the, does the rate included in the contract reflect the adjustment of the early cancellation and the new rates for next year?
Yes, so the new contract in the exhibit, I believe there's an attachment with those new rates. There is a slight increase in the contract that includes some additional planning and economic development consultant dollars that are currently not in our current contract. We've been kind of allocating other staff meeting time, council meeting time dollars for those economic development conversations we've had.
Okay, but the not to exceed number that you got in there for sort of general services, has that number been blended with those, the new rates?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'd ask any citizen or resident, come up and state your name and address and your question, please.
Frank McKeon, 220 Glenview. A question in regard to the contract. What was the cost of this contract last year?
Just over $40,000, over $40,898.
So it was about eight or nine thousand dollars each?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Is there anybody else that would have a question or concern? Patty, please.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver? Yes.
that we could lose our 911 service and that we might not be an agency and a PSAP. And so there's been several boards put together, several review committees put together, and all worked hand-to-hand with Mahoney County Prosecutor's Office. The city manager, law director Fortinato, and I all agreed to allow Mahoney County to negotiate for us. We've, several members of our agency sat on committees in the different boards. A lot of it was shopping to find the best vendor for this county. And the whole idea behind this was how could we connect all of the agencies together? Boardman, Austintown, Campfield, Struthers, Fever Police Department, and we're on the path of making that happen, this is part of the process. So the county through 911, with 911 funding is able to purchase, is going to purchase the CAD system for our dispatch center. If we were to purchase that alone, by ourselves, without their help and their funding, it would cost us roughly around $350,000 upfront. That's always been funded by Mahoney County 911, but with changes at the state level, and they reduced the amount of PSAPs to a county to three. There was some question whether they go fund us or not. They are able to fund us, and so we are going to reap that benefit. And the goal here is to connect all agencies together. Yes.
Is this only going to be police departments, or is this going to be fire as well?
This is going to be police department, like, sort of record data, no, it's just all law enforcement.
Okay, I think I did see Boardman Township Fire listed as a participant.
Well, they'll be dispatched by Boardman, but as far as their records management system, you know, that may be why they, Boardman's the only agency that offered to negotiate separate, and that may be the reason, but no, for us, it's law enforcement only.
Okay, and does this affect any of our dispatching with any other law enforcement agencies west of here?
Law enforcement or fire?
Well, I guess we only dispatch fire.
Correct.
Go ahead, never mind.
Yes, yeah, so the goal is to be able to, the ultimate goal is to be able to share information, have it readily, and like, as it stands right now, I couldn't log onto the system and see what Boardman has going on, or look at their investigative leads, or Austintown. They can't log into our system, they have to physically request it and get it from us. And so right now, the plan is to share all that information. Now, we are completely protected as it pertains to public records. I mean, we're going to be covered on that end. We'll protect our information, but as far as anything used for investigative tool, they're going to be able to access. Again, the county's paying for the CAD. Along with CAD comes a records management system. Currently, we're operating on a records management system that was purchased in 1994. Now, it's received several updates since 1994, but that was the last time we physically purchased a records management system, which is our report props. Anytime we take a call, it comes in through CAD, it gets one button transferred over to a report, a report's generated, and the officers come in, type the report, so traffic stop and arrest, CAD, yes.
You use the term CAD a couple of times. CAD, computer aided dispatch?
Yes.
Just for everybody.
Yeah, so, yeah, I say that so loosely because I've just been around it so long, but CAD is the computer program where the dispatcher takes a 911 call or any call, they enter information into the computer and automatically generates what type of call it is, how many costs to dispatch, and then if it's going to be a report, it'll be transferred over to our reporting software, and then a police report's generated and it goes from there. So our major investment's going to be our records management system update. That's going to be a budget item for 2019. It's not due until December 1st of 2019, but in order to get the ball rolling and start this process of implementation, the county, Mahoney County, is going to front all of the money for all agencies, and we will reimburse the county on December 1st. But it's the only way to implement the process, to begin the process. It's going to take a long time. There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be built and plans need to be set forth, and so that's part of it.
In item D, we're talking about the maintenance agreement, $280,000, is that what we're sharing in? Okay, so then our share is the $19,000.
Our share is roughly $10,000.
I'm sorry, $10,699. I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, or Chief Calucci mentioned, these next three ordinances are all kind of interconnected. This first one is specific to the vendor that has been selected by the county through negotiations, which is Motorola Spielman, which is the software company that would be providing the software, basically, the entire system. The ordinance to follow is our interlocal agreement with Mahoney County for the shared agency connected site authorization recognition. And then the last one will be the authorizing of us to enter into the agreement for the sharing, the use of the communication infrastructure that is owned by, was it Austintown Boardman and Mahoney County Communications District? The COG, yeah, right. And just so you know, that is a, we've been paying that. We've paid that currently for this year. We bought those radios, and in 2017, 18, we've paid that. This is an updated contract set forth because several, we knew this was going to happen. More agencies have, are using it, and they had to upgrade the software, so. But the agreement you have in front of you right now, this ordinance is really a sub-license of software. Motorola Spielman is licensing software to the county. We're a shared agency, they're sub-licensing it to us. We don't have to do ordinance here.
Mahoney County signed the agreement, the contract for that. We are just agreeing to participate in the program with Mahoney County.
And in this first ordinance?
In this first ordinance.
Motorola Spielman is authorizing the City of Campfield to be a sub-licency of its software.
Okay.
We just can't use so many software, right? If it's licensed to the county, there has to be an agreement in place between the county, us, and Motorola. That's what you're considering the first ordinance.
Okay.
Chief, if we don't participate in this agreement, what does that mean to us?
Well, that price tag of $350,000, if we want to continue dispatching, we're going to need to upgrade that CAD system. If we choose not to do that, use our current system, obviously, there'll be no connectivity between the agencies. We're operating on a version, a software version that won't be supported in, I don't even want to guess, but in the future, by likely the near future, it will not be supported. We'll be just operating at the hope that it doesn't crash, and we don't need support. Yeah, we won't be connected, you know, similar to the radio project. We wanted to make sure we were on the same radio system that everybody was on. CAD, the computer aided dispatch, and we want to make sure we're on the system that everyone else in the county is on, in our records management, our report writing software. We want to make sure that we're on the same platform.
If your overall goal in the county and beyond is to be able to share resources, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to do this in a consortium, so to speak, than it is try and do on your own. Now, if long-term, you're looking to be standalone and all that kind of thing, then jump off the boat, but it's going to be pretty costly now, and it's going to be costly in the future, anytime you decide that you're going to have to upgrade it.
This is one of the rare times, when you kind of receive this nice regionalization of cost. It really makes a lot of sense.
The description says that it's an annual cost of $280,000. So ours would also be an annual cost of over $10,000?
Yes, and that's for the radio agreement? Yes, that's correct.
And do we have a line item in our budget now, or are we paying?
Yes.
We do? Okay.
It was slightly, I mean, our impact was slightly increased. One, because Campfield Fire joined. So Campfield City, I think our number is 8,000, it's just over 8,000. Campfield Fire is numbered 1,700.
So that's how you count for 10,000?
Correct.
Because I don't see that broken down.
Yeah, I was going to add.
It just says that they'll reimburse the city like $17 or $80 from the entire department.
If you read down through some of the information, you'll pick up something.
Yeah, so that's an annual fee. If we had our own radio system, we'd be paying more than $10,000 per year for the service and maintenance.
John, does the Cardinal Joint Fire District have the same type of CAD system for dispatching?
Completely separate, that's just for the radios. Cardinal Joint Fire District's contracted through us for dispatching, it's separate. So that $280,000 is separate from the shared agency agreement in the local.
Who's this?
Somebody's alarm system.
I'm parked, the last time I got my keys on.
Little bit wrong with the light shop.
It's on mine.
I'm going to get it.
Geez, someone's stealing your car.
I parked over there.
He's going, let's get something done.
Yeah, so that radio agreement is separate. It's separate from that first ordinance that you're considering right now, but it's part of it, but separate.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. At this time, I'd ask any citizen or resident, if you have a question about this ordinance, please step forward, name, address, state your concern. Hearing done, council, do you have any other questions? Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
2018-43.
As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading. I need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Oliver.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Neff?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city and the Mahoney County commissioners, and we move for passage.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch. In, Chief?
Yes.
This ordinance here ties in with that first, so explain to us what this is.
So the interlocal agreement is a lot of what we just talked about. It's the records management, that's replacing, I made a confusion by trying to explain it all at the first ordinance, but this specifically deals with the CAD and RMS project, our records management system, that's our report writing software. That's going to be where our portion is $58,000 to buy the new software. And it's basically our recording software. It's an upgrade from 1994 to now, and it's going to be the same platform that everyone in Mahoney County is using, and it's going to allow us and other agencies to access our data and our investigative supplements.
And this bill's going to come in December of 2019?
Due December 2019.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Tisch?
First off, who are the server sites that are participating in this? It sounds like the county obviously is the host, and then we're named as a server site, but are there other server sites within Mahoney County?
Every, yeah, every agency that has a...
A PSAP is a server site?
Yes, and anyone that's using the records management system.
Okay.
And it's all going to be hosted by, in Volta.
Okay, do we have a member on the standards committee?
Yes.
Okay, and if you go to section 2, subsection B, paragraph 4, Mr. Solicitor, can you tell me what that paragraph means? They talk about the vote will be weighted according to the number of positions held by each participating agency. Position receiving a majority of the vote shall prevail. In the event of a tie vote, the standards committee will continue to meet to arrive at consensus. Are there agencies that have one, more than one participating member? So that agency might get more than a single vote?
I don't think that's applicable. I see the language, I saw the language on our view, but I don't think that's the case. I don't think they'll be able to weight him above. I think everybody's, you know, one.
Well, again, my concern is, it's in here.
Right, but I don't think it's applicable. No, no one agency will have more than one voter. Right. One member's vote. Right, unless there's more than, more than one. If the city camp would have two members of the standards committee, for example, I think that would apply, that's not going to be the case. We had two, but one vote. It was our IT staff.
Okay, well, again, my concern is, if we're in a standards committee, and you got seven other people in Mahoney County voting on the standard, and we're the lone wolf out there, my concern is, I've always been looking out for the City Campfield standards. I don't really care about what else is going on there.
Absolutely. What I cared about more in that paragraph, Mr. Tisch, was is there a resolution? Is there a final resolution? And there is, at the end of the day, the chairman of the Mahoney County 911 Equipment Committee breaks the vote.
That's if it's a tie.
That's if it's a tie.
So we could still be in a minority position and lose it's, okay. Okay, well, I guess as long as we're aware of that upfront.
But yeah, neither community has the same language. Nobody has a different paragraph for subsection 2B.
Okay, it just, I guess it just bothers me, if we're saying that weighting thing doesn't have anything to do with it, why do we have any agreement? At some point, if you get into a battle, somebody's going to draw it out and say, "Well, it's in your voice."
I could certainly ask, just so we have know what the intent, certainly ask the chairman of the State Department of the Judiciary.
Okay, very good, thank you.
At this time, I'd ask any resident or citizen that had a question about this ordinance, please step forward to the podium, please. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
2018-43.
Thank you. As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Oliver.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for use of communication infrastructure. I move for passage.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch, in discussion.
This, again, is specific to the radio communication and that maintenance agreement. Our portion is $10,000. Yeah, so this is the specific agreement that actually allocates the proportionate share of dollars to all the various agencies.
Per annual agency.
And again, who contracted with the Motorola program? Is that Mahoney County again? No, that was Austintown Boardman.
Neff Hawk.
Okay. Very good, so we don't have to be concerned about how they bought it? They just bought it and we're signing on as a participant?
Yep, right, we're just maybe sharing the cost.
Okay.
Will that be locked in then, that $10,699?
Four cents of that, is that state? For 2019, yes.
But will have maybe a new contract for 2020?
Yeah, if the system changes or if there's more agencies, if Campfield, Yeah, if the system changes or if there's more, more agencies, if Campfield, you know, just for example, if Campfield decides to have more than six radios, Campfield Fire, Campfield Fire's price could go up. They base it on price per radio. I don't plan on adding radios, but Campfield Fire certainly may, so it could go up.
Okay.
They've got Campfield Fire in here as a fire that's using it, and they've got Boardman Fire with 19, no, more than that.
Yeah, more.
62 portables.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, their number is, is their number next to it?
They got 46 and 65. Does that mean it counts? Radio and counts.
Yeah, what's their price?
For the fire portables, it's $10,044, and for the mobiles, it's 16 for $3,493.
So it's a proportionate.
Okay.
Radio.
And chief, did you have discussion with Chief Hutchison about this amount that was going to be less to the fire district?
Yeah, and again, similar to us, they're paying a different for 2018.
Okay.
Does, does the fire district tap into or into this agreement, or have you guys talked about it?
You know, again, they're similar to that, they're going to reimburse us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we do the contract. Okay. All right.
Okay, any resident or citizen who would have a question at this time, please step to the podium. Patty?
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
2018-45.
As per the provisions of Section 4.05, Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that counsel dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Oliver.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move that counsel dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second? Second. Second, Mr. Neff.
Mr. Duffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Mr. Tisch, would you do the E for me, please?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign an amendment agreement with American Tower LP for the extension of a lease on city property. I move for passage.
I have a motion, I need a second. Second, Mr. Mayor. In discussion, wait, could you explain this ordinance to us, please?
Yeah, so the city of Campfield first entered in the agreement with American Tower, which was formerly Wilcom Communications back in 1993. The term of that agreement was, I believe, 40 years and, sorry, no, 50 years, which would take the term out to expire in 2043. Through, through the life of this agreement, the cell tower lease property, which is essentially the tower in our Public Works property, can be leased by telecommunications companies, cell phones. American Tower has been unsuccessful at securing leases in order to provide additional revenue. So what this agreement, or the amended agreement does is it extends the term of our agreement to 2053 through two five-year renewal terms. Currently, we get paid for a lease of that tower from American Tower, $150 per month. It reduces that $150 payment to $50 per month with the hopes that it will allow American Tower some leverage to then secure some leases on that tower. If there is a lease on that tower, we have a revenue sharing proportion of whatever that lease is of 15%. And so we're sacrificing the $100 per month that we're currently collecting for potentially more revenue coming from future leases of the cell tower. It also includes an upfront payment of $1,000 for that reduction, essentially making up for the almost year of revenue that we're giving up.
A question. How long has American Tower owned this? I mean, I was involved when Wilco owned it, but did they happen in?
I couldn't really answer that question.
I guess my thought is, have they been actively trying to lease this? And you don't, obviously you don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that's their business, so I would hope so, but I can't answer that question.
And, so therefore, they haven't come to us at any time and said, listen, we've got a lease, but, you know, it's going to be cost prohibitive of us paying you guys $100 more a month as opposed to this other one. I guess my thought, why do we give up $100 and go from $150 to $50 bucks with the idea that, oh yeah, we may rent that and we may get 15% of that revenue, but we may not. Now, granted, we're arguing over, you know, $1,200 over the course of the year.
Yeah, I can't speak to what was, if any, conversations or communications were had prior to January 1st of this year. They first approached me, I believe, back in, gosh, September, August of, with, with the contract that you have in front of you, which went to Mark for extensive reviews, and then basically worked through some of the provisions of their side, figuring out what those terms were. Originally, it was indicated they typically try to go to almost a zero monthly payment so that it essentially entices them to get a lease on the property. So, I mean, again, without taking action, yes, we still get the $150 per month through 2043. I don't know if there's termination provisions or something that they may look at doing in lieu of the increase of the term and the reduction of the payment.
It's a business decision, that's all it is, really. You're, you're rolling the dice, rolling the dice, but they're going to find some tenants for that tower, which they should, it's a great location.
They, they should find tenants for that tower whether they're paying the $150 or they're paying 50.
Well, we don't get, we'll get some of the revenue, we'll share in that, those rental costs, or that rental revenue.
And, and if in fact, they had somebody that balked because we're, they're paying the $150, wouldn't you think they'd come back to us and ask us to modify that?
No, I don't think they'd.
You don't think they'd?
I don't think they'd.
Well, and I don't, I know they look at individual leases, but I think they're doing this as a company-wide program across probably the entire country of, of tower leases that they currently have, and pinpointing underutilized towers and figuring out collectively how they can get, you know, a major telecommunications company to lease all of their sites, which collectively that, that reduces whatever everybody's paying currently by 50 or so dollars per month with the hopes that, hey, they'll throw out the 50% revenue sharing that could potentially be more than the $150 per month.
They do also apply for a zoning permit for that building to increase the size of it.
Pardon?
They have zoning permission to increase the size of that building, double it.
Okay.
You say they have, or they don't?
They have.
Oh, they have, indicating that they might be taking some sales action.
But they haven't said that.
Well, they're in the process, I mean, Armstrong's in the process of upgrading that facility, which I would assume also upgrades the capabilities of the tower that's on that site. Again, with the hopes that integrating infrastructure could spur.
Is Armstrong associated with American Tower?
I don't believe so.
Are we using America, is the city of Campfield using American Tower for our antenna dispatch?
No.
No. No, we put that, that was originally put up there because Wilcom's selling everyone the site in the city.
So where are we, where's our physical tower? Where are we?
Our.
Right here at the police department?
Yeah.
Well, it looks like you've got, I mean, you're rolling the dice on a $20,000 bet. That would be our income that we would lose, about $100 a month for 20 years, right? So.
For $100 a year.
Less than $1,000 upfront.
Yeah, but that's the one time.
And again, I don't know what the antenna is from their side. If the terms are agreed, they may, they may cancel contracts. Again, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I don't think there's any certainty that we'd get the 20 years of where we're at right now. We don't sign any amendment.
Maybe we ought to find out what our contract reads. Is there an urgency in doing this tonight?
Not necessarily.
Do you think you can find some additional information on this before we vote on it?
Yeah, specifically if you've got questions, I can definitely find them out.
Well, do they have a term, do they have right of termination within the contract? I guess like in the first one.
I believe it's in there, but we'll, we'll get it more extensively.
Well, I guess maybe my question would be to my colleagues, is anybody concerned about this one way or the other?
Absolutely. We're given a way, we're, right now, we're renting something for 150 and we're just agreeing to run, change it to 50 and.
Yeah, finally, my God, it's worried about that, and if everybody else is in favor, let's put it to rest and go on about our business. I'm just asking a question.
Doing much activity up there, so, yeah, it's worth looking into.
Well, let's see if we've got, in my view, let's see if we've got a cancellation or they've got a way of termination, and maybe even contact them and say, hey, we would be flexible if they see that they've got some interest in the tower, we would reconsider that. Does that sound logical? I mean, or my.
Yeah, I think it does. If we're, if we're going to be able to collect 15% of the revenue, do we have any idea what that revenue is?
Not, not at this moment. Until they get, again, like I said, I imagine it's a nationwide or company-wide distributor. So if they get, you know, a, they sell one coming to lease the tower for all of their towers, and then a proportionate share of whatever that revenue is per tower, we would see 15% of that. I don't think they're specifically pinpointing individual towers and saying, okay, let's, let's negotiate individual deals with each person that owns this tower.
That makes sense. The other thing we could do is we could contact some folks that have towers around here, find out what they're getting paid to have the towers on their property, and if that's sort of a standard number or a four low or whatever. I'm just throwing out ideas, and again, you know, if I'm pulling around here for 1,200 bucks and maybe just go do something else, that's fine.
Well, we're, we're not privy, if they've been making sales with that tower, we're not privy to that with this ordinance.
If they could lease it from the top to the bottom, we don't get a penny right now.
Right, and we wouldn't be, we would know also if they're doing that, correct?
Oh, why, we could see, we'd see the.
We'd see activity at the tower.
Yeah, we'd see something on the top.
We'd do that.
Yeah.
I wonder how we would get financial disclosure? How would we know what, you know, how much they've leased and were we just accept?
It's in the agreement.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't know, I would think that if that's the only tower in this area, this radius of our city, that that would be a valuable tower. You know, and, and my thinking is, 15% of the revenue is probably greater than $150 a month. That's just, I don't know.
I would agree that it probably is, but, you know, 15% of nothing is what we've got now.
Right.
You know, probably a phone call, I don't know who's responsible for the tower at the Campfield Baseball Club. They've got one right across that turnpike.
And there's a tower on Shields Road farther down than that?
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, close to Raccoon. I think we should look into this a little bit more.
Table.
If we table this, we have to act on it next.
Yeah, we'll certainly be able to review the current lease and answer at least the question relative to their ability to terminate now.
Right.
Okay.
So I think we have.
Is that the only question is? Well, the risk of termination should be not agreed to the new terms.
I think that's one question. I think the other question maybe ought to be maybe a little research on where there are existing towers, if we can find out who the owners are, maybe just a couple of phone calls to find out what they.
That are currently leased by American Tower specifically?
Well, I don't care if it's American Tower, just see what somebody's getting for a lease of a tower.
Yeah, any tower, yeah. So I think we have a consensus that table this and it'll have, that we'll have to act on this.
Need a motion to table.
Yes, yes, Frank, please.